All right, good evening everybody. Good evening everyone.
Good evening.
It is the work session for mayor and council for July fifteenth is called to order. And Ms. Rainey, roll call please.
Good evening. Good evening Mayor, Honorable Mayor, Council Members, Mr. Clark. This is the roll call for July the fifteenth, twenty twenty four work session meeting. Mayor Butler.
Present.
Councilmember James.
Present.
Councilmember Anton. Councilmember Gutierrez.
Present.
Councilmember Akins Wells. Councilmember Mears.
Here.
Mayor Butler, you have a call.
All right, thank you. So everyone has had the opportunity to review the agenda. Is there anything from the consent agenda that you would like to have added or deleted?
There.
All right, thank you. With that in mind, is there a motion to adopt tonight's consent agenda?
Show move.
That was Councilwoman James. Is there a second? That was Councilman Antoine. Is there any discussion? All right, Ms. Rainey.
Councilmember James.
Yes.
Councilmember Anton.
Yes.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Yes.
Councilmember Akins Wells. Councilmember Mears.
Yes.
Thank you so much. The adoption of tonight's agenda. Um, is there a motion to adopt tonight's agenda as is? Are there any changes to be recommended?
No ma'am, I don't see them.
All right, thank you. So is there a motion to adopt tonight's work session agenda? That was Councilwoman Wells. Is there a second?
I'll say.
That was Councilman Mears. Ms. Rainey.
Councilmember James.
Yes.
Councilmember Anton.
Yes.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Yes.
Councilmember Akins Wells. Councilmember Mears.
Yes ma'am.
All right, thank you. Tonight's consent agenda. Is there a motion? Nope, this is the work session. Ah, catching on. New business. Council discussion on Atlanta EV Fleet Alliance memorandum of understanding. Background and history. The EAP is seeking applications from coalitions of local governments and regional entities for projects that reduce greenhouse gas emissions in alignment with our priority climate action plan. Atlanta Regional Commission will not serve as the applicant, but has secured the support, has secured, excuse me, the support of grant writers and TA providers to draft and submit the application on behalf of the coalition. The final application, the the final coalition is made up of nine localities. Clayton, Jonesboro, Cobb, Forest Park, East Point City, South Fulton, Lovejoy, Union City, and Douglasville, which are all seeking to secure federal funding for fleet electrification of government vehicles, which will contribute to significant greenhouse gassy emissions reductions in the Atlanta region. Staff is recommending approval of the MOU. So Mr. Clark, is there anything you would like to add? I could have Bobby come up, Mr. Jinks. So just briefly, this was brought to my attention. Um, I'm on the the board for the Atlanta Regional Commission and this opportunity came up. And I think what we're going to see in the near future is more of a regional approach when it comes to seeking grant funding. And so Clayton County is the one that's going to be kind of like the the head that's leading this coalition. And municipalities have the opportunity to jump on board and Forest Park was one of them. I want to thank Director Jinks for taking that initiative. And I think you have an update or just some more insight?
Yes. Basically, there's nine different organizations. And I suppose your approach is the grant writer for the county. And he submitted for fifty million. Once he, all these entities got submitted. And of course, we all know private tanks right now. The twenty eight vehicles. With the thirty four charging stations. So there'll be fuel on each side of my each fire station and city hall and both works. Did it for twenty eight. The good part is is the county is taking the lead, far as filling the grants.
Got to go number two.
Oh. Okay, any questions?
No questions.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. It was um, an emergency with my babies. No sir. Were there any, were you done?
Right information.
Oh, good. Excellent. Thank you so much. Did we do questions and comments? Councilwoman James, questions or comments?
No.
Councilman Antoine.
Thank you.
Councilman Gutierrez.
I'm just excited about this. Director Jinks, let's uh, make sure we market and let the people know on our social medias.
Councilwoman Wells.
No.
Councilman Mears. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We'll be number four. Okay, council discussion and approval of task order. FDC twenty twenty four point zero nine for Falcon Design to assist with bid assistance and construction administration for the fire department's training center and vehicle storage build out. Background and history.
City council members.
Hi. Okay, let me do the background and history.
I'm solid.
The proposal for the renovation of an existing eight bay pre-engineer metal building of about eight hun- eight thousand five hundred square feet. The building will serve three separate functions. Three bays will house the MECC electric room rest- and restrooms, break rooms, and two large classrooms. Three bays will serve as storage for emergency vehicles. Two bays will serve as general storage. Falcon Design will assist with bid assistance and construction administration for the fire department's training center and vehicle storage build out. Now you have the floor, sir.
Okay. Again, good evening. Uh, at our last council meeting, you approved a task order for Croft Architects to just go ahead and start the architectural drawings and construction drawings for this project. Uh, Falcon would be the uh, contract, construction administrator of this project. And so I'm asking the city council to approve uh, this task order for them uh, tonight.
All right, thank you so much. Councilwoman James, questions or comments?
No questions, thank you.
Councilman Antoine.
No question.
Councilman Gutierrez.
No questions.
Councilwoman Wells.
Thank you.
And Councilman Mears.
Oh, thank you.
All right, thank you. Item five, council discussion and approval of the Forest Park Police Department Motor Command Center. Background and history. The Forest Park Police Department operates around the clock, three hundred and sixty five days a year, continually responding to emergencies, crimes, and public safety needs. To enhance our operations and ensure efficiency, we are seeking to procure a mobile command center. The primary function of a mobile command center is to serve as a centralized hub for coordinating emergency responses, managing resources, and facilitating communication between various agencies and entities. If approved, the mobile command center will be purchased from LDV Custom Specialty Vehicles, a company with over thirty years of experience in building mobile command centers and other specialized vehicles for agencies worldwide. The funding source is line item two five three dash thirty one dash thirty two ten dash fifty four dash twenty two zero one. Chief, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, uh, Mr. Clark. Uh, the mobile command center was something that uh, was part of the capital improvement plan, uh, and it's something that we have uh, budgeted for. This is going to be able to enhance uh, our, the police department so we can operate more effective and more efficiently. Um, outside of just responding to mer- emergencies, this mobile command post will be, will allow us to start having dynamic roll calls, which in the event we do have a problem in a particular area, we can deploy this mobile command center and officers will now start having roll call in neighborhoods and different businesses for more visibility and to cut down and reduce any type of crimes or, or issues that we're uh, seeing.
Councilwoman James.
No questions.
Councilman Antoine.
What's that?
Councilman Gutierrez. Councilwoman Wells.
No.
And Councilman Mears. All right, thank you. We do have executive sessions. I'm going to ask for a motion to recess and enter to executive session for personnel litigation, real estate, or legal matters. That's Councilman Antoine. Is there, okay, all in favor?
Uh huh. Hi.
We shall return.
Motion to adjourn the executive session and reconvene into our work session.
So move.
That was Councilwoman James, is there a second?
Second.
That was Councilman Antoine, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you. Now is there a motion to adjourn the work session?
So move.
That was Councilwoman James, is there a second?
I'll second that.
That was Councilman Antoine, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you. So now... Alright, did we have our regular... Oh, nope, we got 20 seconds. Alright, it is 7 o'clock. So the work session for Mayor and Council for July 15th is called to order. So the invocation... For... Oh, Pastor Klink scales.
How's everybody?
So everyone who's able to stand, can you please do so? Remain standing throughout the Pledge of Allegiance.
Amen. Let us bow heads. Father, we thank you for this day, truly a day you have made, a day that we will continue to rejoice and be glad in it. Lord, we thank you for this time of meeting. We pray for your wisdom, understanding, revelation, or knowledge concerning every situation. Lord, continue to bless our mayor, every councilman, Lord, city manager, Lord God, and we thank you for the first responders. Thank you for our police chief, fire chief, Lord, all the workers, all the officers, Lord God, and Lord, we thank you for the, Lord, this community. Thank you for the resident. Thank you for the business. Thank you for what you are doing here in Forest Park. Now we pray for your unity. Lord, we know where unity is. You command your blessing. And Lord, we thank you for righteousness. And without righteousness, the people rejoice. Lord, let us continue to rejoice here in Forest Park. Lord, we thank you for your anointing, your peace, and your joy. And it's in Jesus' name I pray, all who agree, say amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. Of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Rainey, roll call please.
Yes, good evening. Mayor Butler, council members, Mr. Clark, this is the roll call for July 15th regular session meeting. Mayor Butler.
Present.
Councilmember James.
Present.
Councilmember Anton.
How's it going, doing?
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Present.
Councilmember Akins Wells.
Here.
Councilmember Mears.
Here.
Mayor Butler, you have a corn.
Alright, thank you. The adoption of the consent agenda. Is there anything that the council desires to remove or add to tonight's consent agenda? Alright, well, if there's a motion to adopt tonight's consent agenda.
So move.
That was Councilwoman James, is there a second? That was Councilwoman Wells. Alright, Ms. Rainey?
Councilmember James?
Yes.
Councilmember Anton?
Yes.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Yes.
Councilmember Akins Wells?
Yes.
Councilmember Mears?
Yes.
Thank you. The adoption of tonight's agenda, we do have two items to add. And that is coming from executive session. And Attorney Metrocardi, can you refresh my memory what those are? Okay. So, alright. So, I'm gonna ask for a motion.
So move.
Thank you. That was Councilwoman Wells. There was a second by Councilwoman James. Is there any discussion? Alright, Ms. Rainey?
Councilmember James?
Yes.
Councilmember Anton?
Yes.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Yes.
Councilmember Akins Wells?
Yes.
Councilmember Mears?
Yes.
Alright, the minutes from June 26th and our special call meeting on July 1st. I know there were some changes that were submitted. Are there any additional changes that need to be included in this motion?
Amen.
Not hearing any. Is there a motion to group set minutes together and approve what the recommended changes?
So move.
That was Councilwoman James, is there a second? That was Councilwoman Wells, is there any discussion? Alright, Ms. Rainey?
Councilmember James?
Yes.
Councilmember Anton?
Yes.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Yes.
Councilmember Akins Wells?
Yes.
Councilmember Mears?
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, public comments. Ms. Rainey, can you read the disclaimer, please?
Yes, good evening, everybody. According to Section 2-1-7 Rules of Procedure in decorum, comments will be limited to a total of three minutes per speaker. 21 minutes are allotted in total. Members of the public are not allowed to participate in any debate or discussion conducted by the governing body members. All public comments must be limited to matters on the agenda or over which the governing body has jurisdiction. Each speaker must maintain a decorum demeanor and refrain from personal attacks upon members of the governing body or employees shouting and using obscene language. All questions and comments shall be directed to the presiding officer, and members of the governing body may respond to comments during their closing comments if they desire.
Alright, thank you. We do have three that have signed up for tonight's public comments, and so we'll start with Mr. Randall.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Um, I've only got a few things to talk about tonight. I was trying to see if the city can get some funds put in place to put some speed bumps or even some cameras or some lights or something on Burks and Yancey. It's been a constant thing of people running the stop sign over there. And late at nights, there's people that drag race, like going down the street. I've witnessed it numerous times. I'm afraid for these kids to be out walking during the day and people running that stop sign, then, you know, some speed bumps or something like that could be put in place there. I don't want, I don't want to see a kid get hurt, because that's a very dangerous area right there. You know, there's people that discharge their firearms off at late at nights, just like last night around 1 o'clock in the morning. Neighbor decided he was a good idea to shoot his gun twice. Why? I don't know. Just so much going on in that area. Another thing is try to get some extra patrol also in the area of Burks, Yancey, towards City View. I've been seeing a black SUV with no tags selling narcotics to people on City View, down Burks, North Avenue, Pocket. I don't have a good working phone to even call Forest Park, because, you know, city sidewalk damage my, uh, my phone pretty badly, where it's been hard to even dial 911 for even help now. But that's all I gotta say tonight. Just get some extra patrol in that area before any kids get struck by vehicles, because they don't care. They don't care. I've even had Georgia State Patrol in that area pulling people over left and right for that stop sign. I've seen them in the area, and I know they're in the area. Why they're in the city, I couldn't even tell you. But at least, you know, we got law enforcement out there doing their jobs and keeping our community. But at least, you know, we got law enforcement out there doing their jobs and keeping our community safe. I appreciate all lo- local law enforcement officers that are out there doing their jobs, working hard. Um, even the ones that had contact with me half the time, you know, they always nice, they're always respectful, they always ask me how my day is going, and I respect that. You know, I love all law enforcement officers. I don't hate them. I just don't like the ones that are bad apples, is what I would call them. But, like I said, Chief Chris has been done a fantastic job with his law enforcement officers with respect, courtesy. Uh, definitely know how to help someone when they're having a bad day. So, congrats to you on that one.
Thank you. Mr. Ibanez?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
And, um, thank you very much for allowing me to do the speech. I wanna say thank you for the, um, updating on the website, that you put it up there, and giving the opportunities to a lot of people to get a jobs. That's a good thing. One of the things, and one of the jobs that I like to see, you know, and that I'm seeing is about hiring the new officers. And I've been making, been saying this before, that we spend a lot of money hiring new officers, and the training that we're giving to them, and the time that we're giving to them, it's a lot of taxes, pay taxes that we're doing. Most of the times, those officers, in such a short time, they leaving. And I have spoken with someone then, they have left. And we wanna fix the problem, wanna fix the issue. What's the problem? What's going on? You know? It's something that I've been seeing lately, and thank you for the personnel, the officers, thank you, chief. A lot of things that, uh, is happening, like at this time, and we have, uh, fixing the road and transfer room. They did a pretty good job maintaining the order for those, the new road that we putting up there, the asphalt. And also, I would like to say, and I would like to see we can get a few seconds of silence for those people, loved ones that has passed away, like my sister passed away in Mexico. And thank you. It's hard for me to fly to Mexico at the time when these situations happen. More likely is because I have son ticket. I got a ticket that was run over from Forest Park to um, Leighton County. And I have not been scheduled to be in accord. So therefore, I cannot go because I don't know what time I, my court date is gonna come from that ticket. Which I'm saying that ticket has been wrongly writing. Therefore, I make emphasis on the training for those officers that we hiring. And I those officers that they doing no good tickets, I want that trash out of here. I don't want it. Now, forgive me to say trash, but I don't want it. Send them us. I've been working, we've been working too hard. We keep it order. Working too hard to remodeling this body on and everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it Ms. Gwen?
Hello.
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 I actually thought that this incident, um, that I'm about to speak on was already taken care of, because I had met with, um, Chief Brandon Chris and Lieutenant Wickerson. The reason I had to meet with them was because it was rumors out in the community that, um, the show that we put on in remembrance of my son at the field disconnected with Head Start, we've been doing it every year in remembrance of Tishon, private second class Tishon Gwynn, who passed away, who was a member of this community. We do it every year. It's a free event for the community. People have praised us for doing this. Um, rumors have leaked out into the community, um, everyone is saying that it was Lieutenant Wickerson, um, stating that it's funded by Self Employed, which is my son's clothing brand, and the local drug dealers. Now, what I will not have is the city of Forest Park tarnishing my son's memory, and what I will not have is the city of Park, Forest Park making assumptions that my son is a drug dealer, when he's not. He built his business from the ground up. My son dresses doctors, lawyers, famous people. I was gonna let it go, 'cause I talked with him, we had a nice talk. I thought it was finished. Saturday, we had an event in the yard. We had a local rapper from Atlanta, him, his management team. No, they were not the same color as we were. Few police cars rode by, next thing we know, we have undercover in the yard. He's acting like he's drunk, falling all over everybody, saying that this is a place to buy weed. At three seventy-four First Street, Forest Park, Georgia, we do not sell weed. So why they're sending undercover cops into our yard? I don't know. Our yard is a place of solace. I could walk outside and you could see a movie star, you could see a rapper that's out there. Mom, I just come here to get some rest, because it's peace. When I come here, nobody's in my face asking me for my autograph. Nobody's in my face wanting to take my picture. We can't have our young black men out here being labeled. We get back to the community all the time. People reach out to us all the time. We do toy drives, food drives, back to school drives, all kind of stuff. We had one lady reach out just to say, I just had a baby, I'm on hard times, can you just buy my baby some milk and some diapers? Now how can I sit up and look at these young men's faces, that now you wanna call drug dealers and say, well, you know, just because they're calling you a drug dealer, we still gonna do the right thing. No, this gonna stop, and it's gonna stop today. I'm not gonna deal with it. So whatever I have to do, I'm gonna do it. But my son will not be labeled a drug dealer. Self Employed, now Hiring Inc. is a clothing brand, an urban clothing, clothing brand. You look around, you'll see a lot of people with it on. 'Cause you see a lot of people with it on, they may do some things that's not right. That doesn't mean that they own Self Employed. Self Employed is owned by my son. His name is Javonte Trayvon Gwynn. He's the owner of Self Employed.
Thank you. Well, Ms. Gwen, let me ask you, was there anything further you'd like to say?
I would like to say.
Um, well...
You know, we've been dealing with this issue for quite some time.
Give me another three minutes.
Okay, we've been dealing with this issue for quite some time, with the police officers within the neighborhood. One while, it got great. Now it's back bad. On the Fourth of July, we had some officers come through. From what I'm told, they are the, I don't even, I can't even remember the name, 'cause I'm upset right now. They walked through the park, and of course, our skin tone, whenever we see the police, it's just stigma already, because of all of these unwarranted shootings, all of these killings and so forth. They told me that they were sent there because they're supposed to get out into the community. My thing is this, if you have a group of officers supposed to get out in the community, you let your community know. You used to send out pamphlets that would tell us what was going on. From what I was told, it was on Facebook. I checked Facebook, I didn't see it. But we have a lot of elderly people in that community now, and they're not computer savvy, they're not technology savvy. It's a lot of things that I myself and my family have to go out and tell the elders in our community, because they don't know. When the water system was cut off, they didn't know. We had one elder that thought he didn't pay his water. He said, I paid my water bill. I don't know why my water's off. We have a lack of communication. We can't start this all over again. I come to Forest Park, I get pulled up, I can't do this, I can't do that. No! These kids out here don't have that mentality of, this police officer just pulled me over. They have a mentality where they wanna fight back. And you can't help them from wanting to have that mentality of wanting to fight back, because of what they're seeing on TV, what's going on. So some positivity somewhere along the way has to be done. We can't keep doing this. We can't keep losing our kids to stuff like this. And I sat down with him, and I told him that I don't have a problem. I don't, I will sit down with you. We can go out into the community together. But this has to stop, and it's gonna stop now, 'cause my children will not be labeled. I have one son left on this earth, and he will not be labeled a drug dealer. He's not a drug dealer. He worked too hard for his type. He worked too hard to build his company, and I refuse to let a bunch of rumors bring him down.
Thank you. City managers report. Mr. Clark, you have the floor.
Lord of governing body members, again, um, happy Monday, and we are honored to present the report finalizing all of our operational activity for the month of June. Just to jump right in with some highlights of some of our events, just last weekend, we hosted the annual clean sweep. Um, there was a walk with the mayor event. The ward one meeting is this Thursday, July eighteenth, Fun Friday is July the nineteenth, and then there's a ward for block party on July the thirty-first. Under our legislative corner, um, for this month, our council aids filled it twenty-eight calls from the community with different questions, as well as handle sixty different home program applicants. The home program is now closed. We recently opened back up the portal for a short amount of time for additional contractors to be allowed to go into the system to register. There are a total of two legacy residents that have completed all program phases. One roof has been replaced on June twenty-sixth, as well as one shower replacement and door installation on July the twelfth. We're still working, um, through this program. Our current numbers, Ward one, eleven, Ward two, eight, Ward three fifteen, Ward four, nineteen, Ward five, ten. These are just a few pictures from the month of June with some of our activities. Here you can see the Fun Friday event with Erica Dawson. The mayor and I, as well as several other staff members, attended a ribbon cutting for a New Mexican, um, bakery on Jonesboro Road. Alright, some of our new businesses by ward. We had B Sharp Barber Shop open, Calico Pest Control, Three Sixty-five Grocery, Holly Energy, Nanny's Kitchen, Premium Liquidation, Compass Lee's Dream Snack Bar, and GSC Communications Group. During the report, you can see those businesses that are within your respective ward. Just a few of our capital projects, we're still working through finalizing the plans for the city center, as well as Star Park. At the last meeting for the city managers' report, I provided you with some conceptual renderings of what that facility actually will look like. We are still working through the Forest Park Landscape Medium project. Um, the design has been completed and submitted to Public Works for final review and comment. Once those comments are received back from the Office of Public Works, we'll then send them to GDOT for final approval. Um, the business incubator space, the architect has completed and submitted all of the construction drawings for review by the city. We're in the process now of determining the best way to move forward with the constructibility of this site. Again, this is just another rendering for our public of the city center site. All of the park monument signs have been out, um, and the bid opening was held on July eleventh, two thousand twenty-four, for us to begin replacing all of the, um, park monument signs for the city of Forest Park. I will note for wards, um, four and five and three, um, we hope you really enjoy the new park facilities that we've been able to push, put out at some of our pocket parks around the city. Just for a few of our departmental updates for the Office of City Clerk for the month of June, there were a total of two hundred and nine open records requests submitted, and this is just not for the Office of City Clerk, this is citywide. Um, for our code enforcement department, they are continuing with their beautification efforts throughout, um, the summertime, as well as the block parties. Council members, if you have not been contacted with to arrange the date for your block party, please get with Director Walker, so that we can get it on the schedule. For the month of June, they filled it, because I know this is a hot topic for our governing body, they filled it a total of eight hundred and ninety cases, just for the month of June, of which eight hundred and fifty-two of them were resolved, and thirty-eight of them still remain pending. For the Office of Economic Development, of course, we have a new economic development director. I think I was remiss in introducing him at our last meeting, so I'd like to take this opportunity to ask Director Marcellus Williams to please stand, who is our new economic development director. He's came in and already got his foot wet. We have finally finalized through the Downtown Development Authority, the sale of seven fifty-one to seven seventy-one Main Street, we're still under contract and the due diligence period. Also, they have been attending several different training seminars relative to us trying to figure out, how can we really focus on workforce here for our community to ensure that our residents have access and the requisite training for the jobs that are here, especially those jobs around Fort Gillim. Um, this picture here shows a happy Chief Clemens after defeating Chief Chris at their recent softball game. This makes the second consecutive year that the fire department has won. So our hats will go off to the, I'm sorry, the first year that they've won. Our hats go out to the fire department for a job well done. Moving on to the Office of Finance for the month of June, we took in a total of one point three million dollars, and we're still working on finalizing the AP automation, just to streamline how our vendors are paid, just to try to ensure that that process is streamlined. We are also excited that we've been able to, um, successfully implement OpenGov. The first beta test that we did was with the procurement services. Council members, I know that a lot of you wanted to know when certain proposals were going out. This just allows us to streamline that communication and to ensure that all of our vendors and those that are wishing to do business with the city of Forest Park have the opportunity to competitively bid. For our fire department, again, the, the champions for the softball game this year, for the month of June, there were a total of two hundred and ninety calls, and I also wanna call out the high number, a tr- high number of trauma calls that we had for the fire department for the month of June. Council members, you'll remember our effort for us to just hire paramedics only, so after several months, we're happy that we were finally, finally able to offer, um, a paramedic-only job to an individual with over twenty years of experience that'll be here servicing our community. They should be starting within the next thirty days. For the Office of Emergency Management, under the leadership of Iwana Armstrong, um, we're continuing to be proud of all of the work that they did. Um, they have still attended the cert meetings and discuss upcoming, upcoming training activities. And one of the things that we're working on is facilitating a actual scenario by in which if there was an emergency event to happen in this city, everybody knew, knows what to do, and it's a real drill. We'd also like to clue in our, uh, bring in our governing body members, just so that you can see how prepared we are in the, in the face of any type of emergency or disaster in this community. For our Human Resources Department, we're still working on ensuring that all of our positions are filled, as we try to lower our vacancy rate. For the majority of the Public Works jobs that you see there, we either have offers already on them, or they are beginning to start. I know these have been here for a number of months, so we're happy that we were able to finally get someone in, and I think the four firefighter positions that are open, I only think there are two or three that are open at this time. Um, so they're continuing to hire. This picture here shows a happy resident dancing at the Juneteenth Celebration hosted by our Recreation and Leisure Department. We had a record number, record number of participants for this festival this year, and we're just excited to see how this event continues to grow throughout our city. For the Office of Information Technology, they were able to close out a hundred and sixty-nine of the hundred and eighty tickets that were open for that department. Um, average time for closure was four and a half days. Director Cox shared with me that he's working on getting that average time down to one day. For our Municipal Court Department, under the leadership of Dr. Dorothy Roper Jackson, um, we're continuing to host court. Um, as you know, in, in effort for us to get the backlog down, we've actually added an additional day of court, um, just to try to get some of that backlog down. The goal is to be tickets no longer than three months outside of the window. At current, we had some that were up to eight or nine months. So Ms. Roper Jackson has done an amazing job of just getting that backlog back to where it should be. And so this additional court day will be going on for, I wanna say, the next six to nine months perhaps, just until we get it all caught up. Um, for our Planning and Community Development Department, we also have a new director, and that is the Nicole Dozier. Ms. Dozier, if you would, please stand and be recognized by our mayor and councilman. Um, we're still working on Intergov. You hear us talk about the one-stop shop for the Office of Planning and Community Development. Similar to what Ms. Dorothy Roper Jackson did with the renovations of municipal support, we plan on having an open house, so that our governing body members can come in and see the work that we've done now. We've successfully moved business licenses up under that department, so now all of your permits and business services can be done under one roof. In addition to that, we've deployed the Envoy Visitation System, which allows us just to have a closer and more intimate approach with those coming to do business with the city of Forest Park. This picture shows the court staff, as well as our finance staff, with our judge and solicitor at the rededication ceremony. For our Police Department, for the month of June, um, there were a total of one thousand five hundred and seventy-eight traffic stops, of which six hundred and seventy-four warnings were given, twenty-nine of which- of which six hundred and seventy-four warnings were given, twenty-nine of which were following issues, and one thousand one hundred and ninety citations issued. For our Community Affairs Division, of course, they had the, um, softball game, the Clorox Employee Appreciation, and the Law Enforcement Show. Um, this next slide shows the Captain Skelton of the Forest Park Police Department as he celebrated National Bring Your Dog Work Day, which was coordinated by Mayor Butler. We had several employees that participated in this event and were able to bring their, uh, fur babies to work for the entirety of the day, understanding that if the dog messed up, it was on the employee to clean it up. Um, so this, this event was a big success for our community. Alright, for our Public Information Officer, also known as our Press Secretary, uh, for the month of June, we're up to two point seven thousand followers on our Facebook page and two thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven followers on our Instagram page. Um, our Public Information's Office is still working on the short video series highlighting the city's fire and emergency services department. I wish I could take credit for this amazing production that all of you will see, but this is under the leadership of Mrs. Javon and our multimedia specialist. It is sixty seconds with some of our employees and the fire department. We cannot wait for our governing body members to see it. It is absolutely amazing, just a highlight for the amazing employees that we have in that department. Also, just another note, um, we are not sure when the closure on Forest Parkway will be over, but we just ask you to use do care and consider all of the detours for that route. Alright, the next one is just another picture of one of our puppies for the Bring Your Dog to Work Day event. Um, for the Office of Public Works, they have the Food Truck Fridays event that happened on last Friday, as well as the, the Clean Sweep on the, on July thirteenth, and then Fun Fridays on June nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four. We will not steal all of Councilwoman Wells' thunder, but for the Fun Friday event, one of the greatest artists on the South Side will be performing, so we would encourage all of you to attend that. More information to come from Ms. Wells on that. We're working on streamlining all of our, um, work orders in the Office of Public Works. We're using citywide now the one-click app. This picture shows our Deputy Director, Mr. Nigel, with his huge Great Dane event. Nigel was also second place runner-up for our Biggest Loser contest, so we're excited to see him continue to stay engaged with all that happens within this city. For our Recreation and Leisure Event, you will see a nice resident here again at the Juneteenth Event, um, just showcasing him and his kid and the good times that they're having. For the month of June, we collected nearly twenty thousand dollars for reservations, and for our programs, we had fifty-four thousand dollars totaling seventy-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars that we collected for the month of June. This month is Recreation and Leisure Month, and you'll hear more about that further along in the agenda. For all of our residents that are not signed up, to send automatic updates that are monitored by several different staff people, we encourage you to download one-click Forest Park just to allow you to engage with your local government at the click of your fingers. Mayor Butler and governing body members, that concludes my report for the month of June.
Fabulous. Thank you so much. Any questions or comments, Councilwoman James? Councilman Antoine?
Nope.
Councilman Gutierrez? Councilwoman Wells?
No.
And Councilman Mears?
Well, ma'am.
Thank you. Ceremonial, we have a proclamation to present for National Park and Recreation Month. So I'm going to ask the governing body members to come down front with me. Mary, do you have the proclamation?
I have it.
Okay, so the proclamation is as follows. Whereas across the United States, parks and recreation serve an integral wo- role when it comes to promoting the importance of health and wellness, encouraging physical activity, and maintaining dedicated, safe spaces where both children and adults of all ages have the ability to connect with nature. And whereas, according to a report by the National Recreation and Park Association, studies have shown that parks and recreation help stimulate economic growth by expanding tourism, attracting and re- retaining local businesses, increasing property values, and reducing crime. And whereas, the city of Forest Park's Recreation and Leisure Services Department offers a wide range of accessible recreational activities and programs that focus on families, youth development, adults, seniors, and building healthy communities. And whereas, the city's Recreation and Leisure Services remains committed to strengthening the foundation of the city and improving the quality of life for all residents while also providing affordable, physical, sporting, and cultural ventures for all our constituents to enjoy regardless of their socioeconomic status. Now therefore be it resolved, the Forest Park Governing Body recognizes July as National Park and Recreation Month and commends the exceptional efforts and continuing dedication of the city's Recreation and Leisure Services Department.
Oh, you know you want to talk?
Thank you to everybody and my team, ones that are up here. Without them, we couldn't be as great as we are. So thank you so much.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out today. Um, I just want to let y'all know the city of Forest Park wouldn't be who it is without everybody here, citizens, um, first responders, police, everybody here. I want to thank Tyree for also giving me the opportunity to work for him. This is my second year with him, and I just thank you for everything you do, boss man. Uh, I love my team. I love the people I work with. I love everybody in Forest Park, and I'm glad that I've been able to grow up here since my little days as a young one, and just thank you to everybody that came out today.
One of my students, man, what's up?
Alright, well, thank you so much, Tyree, for everything. Give me what?
Listen to it.
Thirty seconds?
Easy.
Well, no, because the roll call is going to take some time. Give me ninety. Wait, don't start yet. Give mine. What do I get? What do I get? Alright, the consent agenda. Item one, approval of the acceptance of fiscal year twenty twenty-three E M P G from G M A. And item two, approval of a contract ex- extension for on-call landscaping services. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
Sommo.
Councilwoman James, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Where did Mears go? Okay, that was Councilman Antoine. Any, nope. Ms. Rainey?
Councilmember James?
Yes.
Councilmember Anton?
Yes.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Yes.
Councilmember Atkins Wells?
Yes.
Councilmember Mears?
Council approval of the Atlanta E V Fleet Alliance Memorandum of Understanding. Is there a motion to approve this item?
Sommo.
That was Councilwoman James. Is there a second?
Second, ma'am.
That was Councilman Antoine. Is there any other discussion? Ms. Rainey?
Councilmember James?
Yes.
Councilmember Anton?
Yes.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Yes.
Councilmember Atkins Wells?
Yes.
Councilmember Mears?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Council approval of Task Order F D C twenty twenty-four point zero nine for Falcon Design to assist with bid assistance and construction administration for the Fire Department's Training Center and Vehicle Storage Buildout. Is there a motion to approve this item?
Sommo.
That was Councilwoman James. Is there a second by Councilman Mears? Is there any other discussion?
Oh, ma'am.
Alright. Ms. Rainey?
Councilmember James?
Yes.
Councilmember Anton?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Yes.
Councilmember Atkins Wells?
Yes.
Councilmember Mears?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Council approval of a Forest Park Police Department Mobile Command Center. Is there a motion to approve this item?
Actimmo.
Councilman Antoine, is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilwoman James, any discussion? Ms. Rainey?
Councilmember James?
Yes.
Councilmember Anton?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Yes.
Councilmember Atkins Wells?
Yes.
Councilmember Mears?
Yes.
Thank you. And item six, authorized settlement for the gentry settlement. Is there a motion to approve this item?
Sommo.
That was Councilwoman James. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Antoine, is there any other discussion? Ms. Rainey?
Councilmember James?
Yes.
Councilmember Anton?
Yes.
Councilmembers Gutierrez?
Yes.
Councilmember Atkins Wells?
Yes.
Councilmember Mears?
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, closing comments. Councilwoman James?
Thanks, everybody, for coming out. Um, we don't take lightly the comments that were made on the public comments. Um, but I'll reserve any comment about it until we've had an opportunity to look into everything further. Um, want to remind everyone that I host e- uh, every third Thursday of the month, the Ward Meeting. Um, it is located at six nine six Main Street, which, which is the Hartsfield Community Center at five o'clock. Um, it is also streamed online via Zoom, so the recording will be available at a later time if you're not able to make it in person. Um, the June, yeah, June meeting, uh, should be on the website now for you to review. Um, mark your calendar for, I believe it's September the twenty-eighth. It's the last Saturday in September. We're confirming all the details. We're partnering with our, um, uh, Rex Department as they, uh, kick off their, uh, help me out, mister. They're, yeah, they kick off their five K and the, uh, tailgate. Uh, we are having a homecoming, uh, parade for Forest Park High School, so we're asking all alumnis that are graduates of Forest Park High School, business owners, and, uh, those that just want to participate to, uh, be involved in that, uh, march, um, where we'll start around two, two fifteen, sometime right in there, and end up at the amphitheater. So we're getting all those details together, but, uh, we would love for you to have a float and, uh, decorate your car and do all that kind of stuff, uh, to celebrate with, um, Forest Park High School. Um, and, uh, one other thing I would say is just paying attention to, um, the national things that are going on. Um, one of the things I want to say is if someone says they can't breathe, they're going to struggle. So I don't want, and I don't know, i- it's, it's something that I, I just feel like it should be common knowledge that you can't expect someone that can't breathe to be still. So if someone tells you they can't breathe, please don't expect them to be still. Uh, I'm so disturbed when I see the different things that are happening, um, in our world where people are dying unnecessarily, um, because we are not using common sense. Um, and so I just want to make sure that, uh, thank God, our community is not involved in anything like that, but I just want to make sure that people are aware that if someone is struggling for their breath, they are going to struggle. They're not going to be still. So you can't keep, um, collapsing them and expecting them, um, to be still. Um, and that's how people have died. And so I think that that's something that, um, I think I'm going to continue to say, um, because it keeps happening in our world today. Um, so with that said, thank you all so much for coming out, and I really appreciate you.
Councilman Antoine?
Thank you guys for coming. God bless.
Councilman Gutierrez?
Hello, everybody. Good evening. Thank you for coming out. Um, welcome to the new employees. Excited for you to join our family. Um, sharing the sentiment of my colleague here with the comments, thank you for coming tonight and letting us know and making us aware of these things. Um, that is not the perception we want the community to have, um, of our police officers and the public safety, so we'll be working on that, ma'am. Um, yeah, uh, I turned thirty-eight yesterday, so I feel a little older. I've got some grays coming in. And, uh, I just, just grateful for life, like, uh, like what you said now really just made me think, and let's just, you know, love each other more and make this a better world, you know? A- anybody can complain about stuff and just be grateful for what you have. Uh, you know, a lot of times just waking up is a blessing because not everybody does it, so. I'm here if you need anything. Um, it's, it's an honor to serve you as your councilman. Thank you.
Councilwoman Wells?
I told you yesterday, but happy birthday again, Councilwoman Gutierrez. Um, I first want to say welcome to our new employees. You have joined an amazing team. Um, and I'm sure we've gained some amazing employees, so welcome and thank you in advance for all that you will do. Um, I want to also acknowledge, um, Officer Thomas, uh, Officer Dwayne Thomas, who was in the park on Saturday, um, on the grill cooking and, and actually giving back to the community. Um, that's what I call community policing. Um, and, and shout out to his mentorship program. I, I couldn't be there because I was working, but I saw the pictures and the videos, and that means a lot in our community where mentorship and leadership is, is actually needed. So, um, Officer Thomas, thank you so much for giving back to our community. Um, I also want to say again, thank you to Public Works, Nigel. Thank you so much. I, again, know I've gotten on your nerves. Um, but Perkins Park, Perkins Park is now complete except for a swing set that Mr. Clark thought was needed, so we're still waiting on that, Mr. Clark. Um, as well as Second Street Park, the renovations have started on Second Street Park as well. Um, so thank you all so much for all that you do. Um, and to go to what Ms. Gwen said in her comments, I will comment on it. Um, because I too have a son, um, and I know that Ms. Gwen, that you've lost one of your kids and, and me and, um, oh, I'm sorry, because of my nerves all over the place. I was actually about to cry while she was speaking. Um, because I, and, and no disrespect to Chief, I think you do an amazing job, but I, I also think community policing is very important because if you're actually community policing, you would know our community. You would know how much this young man gives back to our community. You would know that he doesn't drink, he doesn't smoke, he doesn't sell drugs. You would know that if you knew our community. And so although I'm happy that our police department is fully staffed, but I think they need more training. I think they need to actually know how to community police. This man has been doing this ever since his little brother passed away, and then at the event, after the event, I'm getting phone calls how nasty the officer's attitudes were because they're not familiar with the community and familiar, familiar with what this young man has been doing ever since his brother passed away. Um, and I just think it's, it's sad. She's been here all of her life. Um, her mom was a vessel in the community. Her kids grew up in the community. She's lost one son, and so to be harassed and told that your son sells drug and for that to be put out in the atmosphere by our own, I, I feel like that is so disrespectful, and I would just ask Chief that maybe these people, um, these officers actually get out and fellowship with the people and know the community that they're serving because it's an embarrassment. And I, I, I had a meeting with, um, Ms. Gwen's son plenty of time because he's helped with back-to-school drives. I mean, giving out uniforms, truckloads of things. Me and Mr. Clark has had meetings with him. He's actually trying to buy property in the city to give back to his community, and so to, to have his mom up here in tears crying because this is happening to her son who doesn't even smoke or drink or go to the clubs, it's unfair. It's very unfair, and I would just ask that these officers learn the community that they're serving because it makes a difference. It really makes a difference, and she's still grieving her son, and now she got to worry about the po- police, you know, falsifying things when it comes to her, her other son that gives back so much in this community. That is the best Fourth of July show. We don't even put on the, the show that they put on for the Fourth of July. And so that's a time to come together. That's a time to fellowship, and that's a time for you to get to know these individ- individuals in a community that you serve, and that's why I have so much respect for Officer Thomas for actually getting out in the community and talking to these kids and talking to these parents and having some type of program for these kids. And it's the same, and, and I'mma, I'mma tell you, please, my son is, he has a nice car. He's an athlete. He's a sophomore in college. He doesn't sell drugs. He has dreads. He doesn't do any of that. So just because a person may look a certain type of way, or just because someone hangs around them or comes around them, and their home is open to everybody, that doesn't mean that he's affiliated with that. So if you want to follow someone and search somebody's home, follow the ones that's doing it. And it really angers me because I have a young son, and I know what's going on in today's society, and you don't want these young kids to be, get pulled over by the police and have this type of attitude because when the police get out, they have an attitude because they've already labeled you. And not just in, in our community, but And not just in, in our community, but everywhere. They've already labeled you. So just think about that. Let's, let's, maybe we need to have more people that, that are from here or that actually live in the community applying for these police jobs so that our residents and our young men and women and senior citizens don't have to deal with some of the things that I've been hearing, that they've been dealing with for a while now. Thank you all. Have a good night.
Councilman Mears?
Well, I want to welcome Mr. Willie back. He, he was MIA last time. I'm glad he's here and doing well. I agree with Ms. Wells on, on a lot of stuff, but I want to commend the Fire and Public Works and the Police Department because you wouldn't want to live here if they wasn't here. If you just look around all over the country, close, far, Alabama, Birmingham, just had a massive killing hundred, two hundred miles away. Sometimes you get bit, sometimes you make a mistake, but you're always there fighting. You got to figure it out. It takes more training, whatever it takes. But people cannot exist without some kind of government and some kind of rule and some kind of policing and public works and the fire to be there when you're sick. So I just want to commend, not to overshadow Ms. Wells's comments, but I, I want to thank those groups for a job that I think is well done. Thank you.
So don't, don't worry. I was going to show a quick video, but I'm going to refrain from doing that tonight. And some of the comments that were shared today, I'm really trying to get my thoughts together because I am accustomed to law enforcement truly serving and protecting the community. So I expect nothing less than that to happen in a municipality where I serve and, and live also. So to hear that there may be a slight, a slight deviation from that is very alarming. But I'm going to trust that our city manager and our police chief will make sure that the comments that were brought forth today will be addressed sufficiently and appropriately and expeditiously because there is no way that we can live in a municipality in which law enforcement does not truly serve and protect its residents. And so I'm just going to leave it in their hands, and if they are the men that I know that they are, this will be addressed appropriately. Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
That was Councilwoman Wells, is there a second?
Second.
That was Councilman Mears. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.